Regular meeting in the Planning Commission for the Town of Superior. Can we have the roll call, please?
Chairperson Jim Sotell.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Robert Momars.
Here.
Commissioners Phyllis Harden. Jerry Malia.
Here.
Jason Reese.
Here.
Lisa Ritchie.
Here.
Anthony Stewart.
Here.
Steve Whitty. Attorney Hillary Graham. Associate Planner Stephen Williams.
Here.
Planner Fred Fox.
All right, thanks. Next item is approval of the agenda. Has everybody received a copy?
Yes.
We have a motion to approve?
I move we approve the agenda.
Commissioner Momars, second.
Second.
Commissioner Stewart, and all those in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried. Next item is public comment on the consent agenda or non-agenda items. Seeing nobody here from the public, I assume it's safe to move on. Next item is the consent agenda and the minutes of the September 2016 meeting. Does anybody, has everybody received copies of the minutes?
Yes.
Anybody have any changes?
No.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes, the consent agenda.
Commissioner Ritchie, second.
Second.
Commissioner Momars, all those in favor. Aye. Motion's carried. All right, next item is the public hearing and adoption of a resolution recommending approval of Superior Town Center Final Development Plan One, Phase Five, for Coal Creek Improvements. Go ahead and open the public hearing. Does staff want to make any presentation?
I do have a presentation. And we're not sure if the consultant's going to get here to answer his part of the questions, but I think the presentation will cover the gist of the proposal. Shannon, do you mind turning the light out over there? Thank you. Stephen Williams, Town Staff. The application for Agenda Item Six concerns a final development plan for Phase Five. It's the Coal Creek Improvements. As you likely recall, Planning Commission heard and made a recommendation on a final development plan concerning Parks One and Two in September. This application was taken to the Town Board in October, but it was not considered. The Board instead directed staff to proceed with an FDP for the associated creek restoration improvements only, so that the associated flood permits related to the creek work could be pursued while the details of Parks One and Two were finalized with the developer ranch capital. The Town of Superior is the applicant for this final development plan proposal because the town is coordinating the creek permits and the associated, creek design and the associated permits. This application focuses on the roughly 4.58 acres colored here. The staff has requested or requested that this larger park illustration be included in this application just to show you the context and kind of remind you of what you'd already seen in September. But nothing outside the limits of the darker colored area is actually part of this application. Stepping back a bit, this provides the context of where this section of Coal Creek lies within the Town of Superior, and this shows where it lies within the Superior Town Center subdivision. The applicant site plan shown here provides a broad illustration of the improvements proposed along this stretch of Coal Creek. Like the previous slide, the extent of the FDP is shown by the dashed black line that encircles the colored area. The faded black and white lines, which don't appear quite as well here, show the existing contours of Parks One and Two, or what's also known as Track A and Track B within the Town Center. The limits of this FDP are primarily driven by the grading and drainage work necessary to complete the proposed creek improvements, which includes the installation of six vertical drop structures that will provide nine feet of drop between McCaslin Boulevard and US Highway 36 to the west, or to the east, excuse me. In addition to the associated grading and revegetation, which we'll get into here in a bit, the primary elements of this proposal includes creating a consolidated ten-foot-wide creek bed, constructing three low-water crossings where these circles are, which will connect to the trails that are planned within Parks One and Two, and installing a ten-foot-wide concrete trail along the north side of the creek. Sheets Three and Four of the application are shown here. They're the creek plan and profiles related to the proposed grading work collectively. These sheets clarify that two existing wetland areas, shown in blue, will be retained and enhanced, that three low-water crossings, which we just mentioned, will be installed, that an existing stormwater line, shown here kind of in purple, will be replaced with an 18-inch line, so it's just an older line that serves the pond that already exists on Park One or Track A, that the boulders and stone walls kind of shown in the location that just floated up on the screen will be installed to create the drop structures and the walls that are around those drop structures, or to reinforce the creek walls. And this is, four of these six drop structures, which are shown kind of in the orange here on the profile, will occur west of where Marshall Road will eventually cross Coal Creek. And these drop structures, like I said, are to provide that nine feet of drop in grade, which is consistent with what the 2004 master drainage plan showed for this study after the flood event that we had in 2013, which was also done in conjunction with the overall PD, which, as you've seen over and over again, shows this Marshall Road connection. So the complicated thing about doing something like the creek now, basically it's the grade work, so it's just the integrated application that shows that we're going to get to this elevation, and this elevation is critical because we want to have a trail that goes underneath the bridge, as well as just the creek that goes underneath the bridge. So that's why we're getting it down in grade, in addition to the floodplain recommendations that we'll kind of discuss here in a bit. In addition to the illustration shown on the first slide, which captures the planned park improvements, staff also requested the applicant include an illustration to help reflect how the proposed work would impact the floodplain boundaries associated with Coal Creek. This illustration, which was prepared as part of the FDP for Parks One and Two, reflects several floodplain-related perimeters, including proposed water surface extents for 1015 and 1050 and 100-year rain events. The lines delineated by the current floodplain boundary, shown here in light blue, are of paramount importance because they show where development, or basically where development would be restricted as part of this proposal, and the proposal that would come forward for Parks One and Two, additional grading would be involved in those as well to get the floodplain reduced to this area shown in blue. So you can kind of tell how critical the floodplain work is in reduction of the actual floodplain boundaries. Currently, it impacts certain parcels within the Town Center. This is Block Six, this is Block Seven, this, if I remember correctly, is Block Two. But it significantly shrinks the floodplain boundary proposal that we're discussing here.
Stephen, real quick, and that's the 100-year, or what?
That's the 100-year, yeah, so the floodplain, that's, so yeah, there's a number of floodplain boundaries, but the 100-year flood extent is a little bit different than the 100-year floodplain, and the 100-year floodplains will control where you can and can't develop. The last two sheets of this FDP address the landscaping and revegetation plans proposed. All right, didn't click far enough. The map illustrations above work in tandem with the planting schedules kind of on the bottom right of each sheet. To clarify the plans, in total, 167 deciduous trees, 345 deciduous trubs, and six different wetland species mixes are proposed along this stretch of Coal Creek. The work involved to consolidate the creek from a braided channel, which happened after the 2013 flood, into a consolidated creek bed will require fairly extensive grade work and site disturbance. The state and federal revegetation requirements for this creek corridor stipulate that all removed plants be replaced at a one-to-one basis at minimum. This plan shows conformity with that and will require associated permits with the state and the federal, associated state and federal departments. The proposed revegetation plan will conform with those requirements and result in a far more diverse and healthy riparian habitat along this stretch of Coal Creek than currently Finally, staff has reviewed this application in relation to the FDP requirements and is recommending approval of this proposal with the conditions outlined in staff's memo, which is also summarized here. This concludes my presentation. Patrick Hammer's in attendance to, I think, walk through the video that you guys saw before and answer any questions and maybe discuss the process a little bit more.
Thanks, Stephen.
Now, you want this?
Is this the cool flyover that we saw before?
This will be the cool flyover. Let's see. Again, I'd like to thank you guys for your patience as we've been working through this process. As you've heard us say before, you know, we started this three, four years ago with the community engagement process. We know that it's a sensitive project, it's a sensitive project area, the creek's a sensitive subject, so thank you as we kind of work through it. So I think what brings us kind of here tonight, and Stephen didn't touch on it too much, is there is a need for us to get the permitting process started as soon as possible as we start to look at timelines to get the project completed. So per the Board's request, we went ahead and worked really with Matrix to create a whole new FDP to separate the creek out, in a big effort just to get the ball rolling. Ian Anderson, who was here previously, as we've kind of discussed it, you know, we could be anywhere between a nine-month to a 12- to 18-month permitting process, just to get the project started, so a little bit of urgency on our part just to get the creek piece of it going. If you remember, this is kind of the flyover. We are currently working with Matrix, per the Board's request, to look at ways to reduce the overall cost of the parks. None of those changes will impact what we're ideally looking at, at the creek. Some of our early cost estimates involved, actually, some of our early cost estimates included a lot of the retaining walls that were going to be needed for the bridge, as well as, I think, so the grading and the retaining walls to actually get the bridge in are ultimately, we feel, the responsibility of the developer. Those costs were initially lumped into what we were looking at as our park costs. So we are beginning to work with Matrix to separate out the costs of what we think the grading and the retaining walls would need to be for the bridge, so we're feeling pretty optimistic. Keep the creek corridor the same, be able to keep the integrity of the parks the same, and reduce the cost a little bit. So there's not a whole lot new on top of Stephen's presentation, which was, again, really thorough. But just to give a little bit kind of more perspective, we've always referred to this kind of Park One with the creek on the southern side there, kind of going all the way back to that initial presentation, we had started throughout those concepts of kind of a little bit more of an urban wild area and a riparian wild area, knowing that this area, the creek, was probably going to be heavily disturbed just due to the Marshall Road connection. But really, our goal, working with the Advisory Committee, specific to the creek, was always to kind of create these natural environments as you move further away from the bridge. And as Stephen mentioned, the low-water crossings. We are looking at maybe doing a little bit of realignment on the trails up here, but really just creating those environments for people to go down and to enjoy the creek, and not so much of an active kind of park feel that you would get from Park One and kind of what we were calling the great lawn, or Park Two, which is the programmed field And again, here's just a little bit better shot of what we would start to call that urban wilds corridor, something more, we showed those visuals early on of maybe something that you would see in Breckenridge, or something that you would see in Steamboat Springs, where you had some definite man-made structures, the creek became channelized, and it didn't really have that natural feel, but it was a safe place for people to go down to the creek, it was a safe place for people to go and enjoy the creek, and it was visually appealing. So this would be that urban wild, and as we transition over into Park Two, if you remember back, again, we kind of worked with Matrix to create this transition from what would be fairly heavy park use down to what would be, again, that kind of natural feel. And just real quick on the visual, these retaining walls here, in this grade, we are working to separate those costs out. Those were big impact costs on the park, especially to serve the parking lot in the future kind of retail site here. More kid activity, opportunities for people to come down into the creek, working with the drop structures, but really inviting, really safe, probably a little bit more of a manufactured feel along the creek. Really quickly, just want to kind of touch on this area up here. This was our environmentally sensitive area, it always has been. A lot of what we did was kind of pre-flood, and there was some habitat in there that we wanted to make sure we maintained. The flood came in, kind of wiped it all out, but even then still created this kind of habitat area where the plant material's really good. So recognizing that this was an environmentally sensitive area, really bolstering up the plant material with wetland plugs and the deciduous tree species that Stephen mentioned earlier, making sure that we had plenty of separation from the really active part of the park to the environmentally sensitive area, probably an area where we're not going to encourage a lot of people to navigate down to the creek, just kind of, again, due to the separation and the sensitivity in there. And we think really an opportunity to kind of clean it up. We have a lot of invasive species along the creek. We have Russian olive, we have just a lot of scrubbed fallen trees in there. Most of that will be removed out. Right now, we're looking at a plan to get rid of everything that's smaller than a six-inch caliper, and then, as Stephen mentioned, replacing it a one-to-one, as well as removing everything that would be considered invasive. Also coming in with kind of wetland plugs and seed to really kind of make a healthy, kind of vibrant bottom area near the parks. I think that that's really about it. So I don't have a whole lot more to add from what we've talked about earlier, or what Stephen's presented, but I'm more than happy to answer questions and kind of next step processes of what we're currently working on with the guys over at Matrix.
All right, thanks, Patrick. Does anybody have any questions they want to ask of Stephen or Patrick?
So I do have one, Patrick. Is the urgency related to this moving forward have anything to do with any federal money that's being provided to us, or any money that we need to spend by a certain timeframe, within a certain timeframe?
No. Great question, though, and I think something that should just kind of be clarified is, this will be funded, the majority of this project, if not all, and Alex Aronella from Public Works is here as well, who, his guys have been instrumental in working with urban drainage to come up with some additional funds, but this will be funded mostly out of the town's open space fund. So our ability to separate it out and really kind of control it separate from Park One and Two, which we're working through with the developer, is the fact that we can control how we use our open space funds, so we weren't relying on any agreement or timelines with the developer. I do anticipate, in addition to the funds that Alex's team in Public Works has been able to secure, we'll probably apply for GOCO funds, which, you know, we'll go through several funding cycles as we get closer, but there are no timelines right now that we're really pressing towards. What we're moving towards is, I think the Board's got a desire to see the project start sooner rather than later, and knowing that we're going to have to work through the permitting process, getting that going in hopes that the dominoes will all start to fall together. The permitting process will wrap up, we can get going on the creek corridor, and hopefully we've made some progress on being able to move forward with Parks One and Two.
I think those are similar questions along my line, or, so the town will be the applicant. I'm just trying to kind of see how this will work. The town will be the applicant on this level of permitting, and should the developer, on the hopeful chance that he wants to go sooner rather than later, if we have any permits in process, is that going to cause any conflict with any of their review, or are we potentially jeopardizing? If the developer comes in, say, with a permit for the Marshall Road Bridge, I don't know that that would happen, but...
No, and I might, you know, Stephen and I had an interesting conversation today with Assistant Town Manager Martin Talk about the staging and the timing. I think in a perfect world, we would be able to kind of get everything caught up sequentially, knowing that if we did a bunch of creek work, and then you'd have to come in and then do a bunch of grading and bridge work, that you could potentially undo what we have done.
Right.
I think, looking at when we get to construction documents and the phasing, or the timing of that, I think will have to be really succinct, and it's definitely on our radar, knowing that we've got an area that we're going to disturb, we don't want to put all of our funds into that just to have it come right back out and have those kind of throwaway costs. But other than that, I don't believe that we've had too much conversation with the developer on timing. Stephen might know otherwise.
No, I mean, the only thing I'd really add, I guess, is the, you know, the grading component is for the whole Parks One and Two to get the floodplain out, I mean, to get the full floodplain change as we're showing it, and that's already been done, you know, like as far as, the good thing is that we're kind of stepping backwards. We're not doing this as an incremental piece and then hoping that the rest of it gets designed to fit in. We have a design that I think, you know, everyone's pretty satisfied with, and most of us are very excited about. We're not working backwards, you know? So, you know, it's a comprehensive plan that's already been kind of dialed in, and we're taking this one segment out of it, and we'll be careful with, as we proceed forward, how to sequence those permits as much as we can, and how to get the other things caught up. But I would imagine that Parks One and Two hopefully are resolved and caught up to this, you know, before we actually get an issued floodplain permit, if it does take us, you know, that year or so in order to get that floodplain permit issued, so.
And kind of, as a follow-up, you know, Matrix had the foresight early on to really kind of make some projection and assumptions about what that bridge span, bridge width, and the height would be. We knew very early on that we couldn't really accomplish what we wanted to, really specifically to Park One. If you remember, we kind of had the stage tucked in there and some terracing. A lot of those features were, are reliant on the bridge. And, you know, Matrix, being ahead of the game from the get-go, was able to kind of plan those things in and as much as possible factor in the information as we finalized our design, and I would anticipate the same as we go into construction documents.
Well, I think it's great that we're moving forward with something here, and I think it, just to get the ball rolling, like you said, so I think it seems like a good idea.
Alex?
Alex Aronella, Director of Public Works and Utilities. A little bit more about urban drainage funds. We've applied, not applied, we've asked that this project be included in Urban Drainage's five-year program, so they won't act on it until this fall, it goes through the process, but we've given them some numbers for that, to get it in their program, so they would be a partner in the project. We've also, we have also some leftover funds from the flood mitigation project that was upstream of McCaslin, so we also want to apply those funds to this project as well. And we want them as partners because as they approve what we're going to do here, and it meets all their standards, then eventually it will become a project that will be eligible for urban drainage maintenance funds down the road. So that's why we want to make sure that they're involved and approve everything as we go through, and they'll help us with the floodplain analysis and with the Corps of Engineers in terms of the permitting.
Anybody else have questions for staff?
The only other thing I guess I'd clarify is that construction-wise, I mean, it makes sense permitting-wise, but it also makes sense construction-wise. We would not be doing this construction from the outside of the parks moving towards the creek, so we would be starting with the creek work and moving our way out, so that doesn't change how, I mean, the permitting sequences actually without the overall construction would occur, so I think that gives us some confidence in this going forward, too.
And just for clarification, who issues that floodplain permit?
Floodplain permit technically comes from FEMA, but Urban Drainage Flood Control District is the one that, I don't know, they're somehow involved, but they do the same review, but it actually is a FEMA permit, so.
And then one more thing.
Sure.
I was reading through in the, what was it? I just had questions about the drop structures and how those work, and what specifically are those, and what will they be made of?
I can take a stab at it. I can tell you how I understand it, and then Alex can correct me if he wants to. But the drop structures, I understand, are the rocks, you know, that are going to be put in place. They basically get put on a certain, you know, across the creek, and then the drop kind of occurs. So the rocks, and the other thing to kind of understand about this is this creek is being built at a ten-foot-wide creek bed, and that, you know, I didn't get this from looking at the plans, fortunately Ian explained it over the phone, but the intent is to really have like six inches of water in the creek, so that it's a very accessible creek, so that's what we'll get on a normal flow. Like if we have a large rain event, it's obviously going to be more, but the capacity of the bed is wide enough to handle it. But that, so that'll just kind of slow the water down, and then the water will drop, and then like the elevation will actually drop. You can see it a little bit better in the profile than looking top-down, and that's why those profiles are on there, but it's taken me a little bit to look at to kind of get that digested, too.
All right, so we're not just talking about like concrete columns?
No, we're talking about rocks, and that's kind of the other kind of cool amenity is we have these three low-water crossings that are actually former, formal bridges, and then the drop structures are actually going to provide you opportunities to walk out on the rocks, which will be kind of above water, too, so for kids, an interactive play, or if you just want to, if you're at a different point and you want to cross the creek, you'll be able to just by going across the boulders as well. It's a very thoughtful design.
And to add to Stephen's comment, something that the Board had requested early on, as well as the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee and Open Space, is trying to create that sense of a continuous flow within the creek, knowing that it fluctuates quite a bit. So the channelization and a lot of the work that Matrix was able to do will hopefully create, even in a little bit of a drier period like we're in now, is that, you know, that consistent depth of water. I don't know that it'll be always great for recreational use in terms of, you know, people wanting to get in there with a float tube, which we've had lots of questions about, believe it or not, and we've had several comments about making, you know, do we need to do some kind of water treatment on the west end of town? But there's been a lot of thought put into keeping that flow consistent, and those drop structures should kind of help, you know, with that piece of it, even down to creating kind of the sound effect of the babbling brooks and plant material around the drop structures, so hopefully it'll kind of give the desired effect that it's more of a year-round water feature, not something that goes dry seasonally.
Sure, sure.
So on the top side of the drop structure, will be deeper than six inches? I mean, it'll be kind of pooling there, and then it'll just constant flow over, and then there'll be six inches out, and then when it gets to the next drop structure, it'll be a little bit deeper? Is that how it would happen, or would it just be a constant?
I think it'll probably actually be deeper right after the drop structure.
Oh, right, yeah.
Yeah, so kind of just drops. But they're only dropping, I think, 18 inches, each of them, so there's six. My math's not that fast, but I, you know, you're getting nine feet of drop over the course of a fairly long creek stretch, and it gets tighter right around, right before the Marshall Road Bridge, as there's four of them kind of within a 250 linear foot stretch of the creek, but that's not, I mean, drop structure sounds like it could be like a, you know, we're going to get some rapids out here, but it's like an 18-inch drop for each one, so.
And on one of the earlier drawings, you had, there were two locations where there was pooling. It seemed like there was, and I can't remember.
Yeah, there's some in- Yeah, there's some intent, and I, I believe that the, one of them is actually underneath Marshall Road or Marshall Road Bridge we're looking to eventually span, and that's probably to provide some shading, like where you can actually go and have a, a cool area as well to get in. But, yeah, I think you're going to have a, a little bit of like these eddies environments as well, but again, Ian would be better to explain all those details than, than myself, sorry.
No, that's great. Thank you. I do have, I do have one more thing. I'm sorry.
Good.
In, um, in landscape plan, I see that there are plans to include different trees in there. One of those tree species is cottonwoods. Do we really want cottonwood trees and...
Cottonwoods actually one of the native species out on there, you know, like along there now, and I imagine it's a slightly different cottonwood species than what's growing out there, but I couldn't say that for sure. But our consulting landscape architect has looked at this as well. Patrick's our Parks and Open Space person, he might be able to comment on. The question was whether or not, in our revegetation plan, cottonwoods are something that we would want included in the list, considering they grow kind of prolifically, but I, they're native to the area, they're native to riparian environment.
So we, we've discussed cottonwoods quite a bit, and just for transparency, we have a request from the Open Space Committee maybe not to include them, just because of the, the seed spread and the cotton. The benefits of cottonwoods is that they establish pretty quickly without irrigation. So, I, you know, we, we tend to think a little bit more favorably on them, and they also help keep some of the, the other invasive species out. But, yeah, we do, we do currently have a, a request from Open Space Committee to try to consider plant material that's not going to seed-spread or drop too many allergens, just, I think, due to people's sensitivity. Might be a little bit tough to pull off, but we've asked Matrix to take a look at it as much as possible, so.
Or to create too many involuntary trees?
Yeah, yep.
I mean, they spread quickly and will take over if you let them. I know from experience in my backyard, I just, there were two of them that just popped up, and they were six feet within, you know, a, a month or two, it seemed.
Uh, hopefully, we're able to mitigate some of that with the wetland plugs and that kind of base layer between the seed and the, the lower vegetation. We definitely see it in town, in our open space areas, that, believe it or not, when we, when we kind of mow the open space areas down, we get more weeds, we get more invasive species. So kind of letting the native grass areas do what they need to do actually filters out quite a bit of that seed spread. I think if we can plan this one right, and I think the Matrix has done a, a good job with the seed mix and the wetland plugs, hopefully we could keep it i- in a nice manicured fashion. We're also planning, you know, this would now become a maintained corridor by the Parks and Recreation Department. It wouldn't, it wouldn't look like Rock Creek does now, which we currently don't maintain, and we definitely don't do any maintenance on Coal Creek. But we would, we would start to treat this like an, an amenity, and, and we would work pretty hard to make sure that the invasive species stay out of it once we make the investment to get it where we need it to be.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, thanks.
More comments on trees, or? Nope? Okay.
I know I don't like them. I have allergies.
Yeah. There, there is a, there is a cottonless cottonwood out there. It's called a plains cottonwood, and there's also silverleaf cottonwoods that don't, that don't have the, that stuff that you're referring to, so it might be worth taking a look at, so.
Yeah. Anybody that golfs on Coal Creek knows how annoying the cotton can be at certain times of the year.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Any further questions from our staff before we close the public hearing? All right. With that, we'll go ahead and close it. Anybody have any comments that they want to add at this point?
Can't wait to see it.
Well, I, I think after, you know, three-plus years of planning this, it's really come out extremely well, and, you know, as the, the rest of the town center comes together, the more planning, the more community input that comes into this, the, the more time it's taken to make a, a smart decision about what we're going to do. This is a fine example of that.
Yeah. Great point.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Well, I, I mean, I, once again, just commend all of you. I, I think it's, uh, I think it's really very, very nice. I think it's going to be just a real centerpiece for the community, and, I mean, I've been very excited personally, after having seen the presentation, you know, when was it, a couple of months ago, telling friends and neighbors in the community, you know, wait till you see this park, it's going to be unbelievable, so anxious to give you guys the green light to get going on it, so. Well, if there aren't any other comments, could we have a, a motion to approve the adoption of a resolution recommending the approval of Superior Town Center Final Development Pla- Plan One, Phase Five for Coal Creek improvements?
I'd like to make a motion to approve a, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the Town Superior, recommending approval of the Superior Town Center Final Development Plan One, Phase Five, for Coal Creek improvements.
Commissioner Malia, second.
Second.
Commissioner Reese, all those in favor? Aye. Motion's carried. All right. Thanks, everyone. Staff announcements and miscellaneous? Stephen, do we have anything?
Um, yeah, I got a couple of, I mean, a couple of basic things, I guess, to begin. Obviously, probably everyone knows that Commissioner Laces was elected to be on the Board of Trustees, so we're losing him, and we'll be advertising that position probably over the next few weeks. Typically, that takes, I don't know, four to six weeks with the holidays. It may take a little bit longer, but that'll get advertised, and the town board will have interviews for his replacement, and I'll keep you apprised of that. We have two concept plan agenda items for the 28th, for the town board meeting. One is Rogers Farm. We saw a proposal on Rogers Farm probably six months ago now, and they were told to come back and a, a few changes, I think, but, um, we don't have that application yet, but what I've seen in conversation, previous conversations with them are probably two different options on how to develop Rogers Farm with a mix of residential and commercial, or just a straight residential development, and Rogers Farm is just south of us here. The other one is a variance request for some properties within Original Town that are zoned medium-density residential. The request is to have a five-foot side setback requirement for that, for those duplexes rather than the ten that's required, so they're taking that to the board to see whether or not something like that would be supportable. Staff will probably be recommending that instead of a variance request, we actually just look at a code amendment so that it isn't a one-off type change. I think that's all I got as far as things coming up for Planning Commission. I was telling Commissioner Reese earlier that, uh, we have something kind of tentatively scheduled for one of the December hearings, but we don't have an application yet, so whether or not that goes forward in December or gets carried over to the first of the year, I don't know yet, but all, the application would need to be noticed by next Monday for it to be on the first, uh, meeting in December for you guys, so I doubt that one will happen, but maybe the second meeting, which actually is the 20th, and then we got to see whether or not we have enough of you here to actually hold that meeting, so I will definitely be in touch, but we may not see each other, so.
Okay.
That's it for me.
All right. Sounds good. Anything else for the good of the cause? All right. With that, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Is the flyby on the town site?
I haven't seen a flyby for the whole town. Steve?
Yeah.